Meeting to order, this is the July 22nd, 2014 Board of Trustees Special Meeting. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on the JED-Z contract?
So moved second.
Aye.
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 I believe Mr. Rowan, you have a brief.
Yes, Ms. Reinhardt, I do have a brief presentation and then I know there'll be a comment from the public, but I wanted to give the board, I didn't know if you want to take the opportunity now to make comments or if you'd like to do that at the closing, your preference.
Making it close?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Reinhardt, members of the board, members of the community, those here this evening as well as those viewing on Waycross. Tonight's public hearing regarding the proposed Colrain Corridor JED-Z is about finding a solution to address the deteriorating public infrastructure within the township. Townships have minimal choices when it comes to generating revenue. We can seek property taxes or up until some recent legislation, we have been able to seek alternative revenue through a JED-Z. That window of opportunity closes with the November election. And since 2001, which is the last time our road levy...
I think that the course locked. Not good in public hearing when you know it can get me.
Frank, key that open. It's just our public safety director, no, just kidding. He's on vacation, I don't know why he's here anyway.
He should have a key.
Well, that's fine. So, looking back, 2001 was the last road levy that we had in the township and since that period of time, we've been utilizing other sources of revenue, primarily general fund through the estate tax and local government fund to maintain our public infrastructure. With the 2011 budget cuts, taking the million dollars in estate tax and approximately half a million dollars in local government revenue, we no longer have a source of funds to address our public infrastructure. So the JED-Z that is being proposed for the November election will give us an opportunity to earmark funding for our public infrastructure. With the change in the legislative direction, we were required to create an Economic Development Committee, a council, and that council had a certain makeup in accordance with the new law. That committee came together and actually approved the plan that is before you this evening on a 6-0-1 vote. I'd like to talk a little bit about the plan and I want to demonstrate on the screen here what's driving the need for the JED-Z. As we think about this plan, it's important to note that historically, when a township may go forward with a JED-Z proposal, they would have a public hearing, at which point you would take public comment and then you could craft your economic development plan and move forward. With the new legislation now requiring the approval by the Economic Development Council, it puts us in a very difficult position to really modify that economic development plan without creating the need to go back to council and have it approved, which there's not time to do before this law passes in December. So, some key components of this proposed JED, we would, the proposal was to contract with the city of Harrison to levy a 1% payroll tax. And there has been some question raised as to our ability to raise that percentage, should the city of Harrison increase their tax. And while the contract does provide for that, in conversations later today with our council, Exhibit B of the actual economic development plan that was approved by the council states that this is a 1% JED-Z. Therefore, it is our opinion that we are stuck with the 1%, even though that was our intent to remain at 1%. So to clarify, this will be a 1% payroll proposal, not subject to increase, even though the contract states it could, we believe the economic development plan would prohibit that. The economic development plan also states that the CIC may grant back grants to the residents and to the businesses, an amount equal to the payroll tax or the net profits tax. Because this economic development plan has been passed as presented, my recommendation would not be to change that, but to clarify for those here tonight at the public eating, at the public meeting, as well as in the minutes, to document that the CIC will be meeting on August the 5th at 5:15 to approve legislation that will grant back 100% of the payroll tax and 100% of the net profits tax, so that we take away any question with regards to that. And those grants would be for those that are residents, that are Colrain residents, that work in the zone, or are businesses that operate in the zone. If you are a resident that does not work in the zone, you will not be impacted by this JED-Z. You have to work in the zone to be impacted. And even if you are a resident and you work in the zone, even though you initially have to pay that tax, the grant will provide a check back to you at the end of the year for the amount that you paid in. The whole goal here is to provide a way to generate revenue without taxing our residents, to be able to bring some revenue in from those that work in the township, that come in from other communities, that utilize our infrastructure on a day-to-day basis, whether it's public safety, our roads, our streets, whatever the case may be, to be able to generate revenue from those non-residents, that's the goal. The goal of the board has been not to tax our residents any more than we need to, and our only other alternative would be to seek another property tax, which right now, we do not believe is in the best interest of our community. As you look at the next several slides, we talked about the deteriorating public infrastructure, we just put a sampling of what our streets look like. The economic development plan will require, and this is still subject to interpretation by council, that at some point in time throughout the duration of the JED-Z, 50% of the infrastructure has to be made within the zone. And we all know that the corridor, the Colrain corridor from Struble to Galbraith, including the cross-streets, there's a lot of opportunities for public infrastructure, whether it's lighting, whether it's bearing utility, whether it's improving the streets and the sidewalks and the roads, partnerships with our county and ODOT to be able to make those improvements in our corridor. However, it doesn't say that that money has to be used right out of the gate. And our intent is, is that should this JED-Z be passed, to leverage those funds to get the repairs that are necessary within the neighborhoods of our township immediately, so that we can start seeing street improvements throughout Colrain Township. So this is just an example of what we're dealing with. If we're not successful in getting the JED-Z approved in November, because public infrastructure is a primary responsibility of township government, we'll have to seriously look at how we continue to fund our parks and our community senior center and other parts of the township that we would consider non-essential in accordance with Ohio laws, so that we can free up some funding to address public infrastructure. So once again, our overall goal is, we have a need, it's an essential service, we do not have the funding currently within the budget to address it, and we've created an opportunity here with legislation that is still in effect, to find a funding solution that has the least amount of impact on our residents, in fact, no additional tax on our residents, to be able to fund this. As we go through this, there's a couple of things I want to point out. As you think about public infrastructure, you have the ability to rehab, which includes such work as full depth repair, storm and sewer lid adjustments, catch basin rebuild, grade adjustments, curb ramps and resurfacing, and then we have reconstruction, which is our skip, which is basically including the removal of all asphalt and base, replacing storm sewers and other utilities, to Hamilton County specifications. One thing about the skip funding is we can apply for grants through the Public Works in Columbus, and usually if we contribute 30%, 30% or so, we can get funding for that. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to fund the 30% match. So we envision moving forward with this JED-Z to be able to take funding and utilize that both in the rehabilitation phase as well as a reconstruction phase. According to the estimates I received from the Public Works Department, as we look at our paving needs per mile, it costs approximately $3.7 million to pave a mile under a skip program. Our share of that would be $1.1 million. And if we were to look at utilizing JED proceeds to pave a mile, it would be $437,000 to be able to pave a mile. In looking at what our needs are to try to get ahead of the curve on our public infrastructure, we need to pave 3.86 miles per year to reach positive improvement on a repaving and a half a mile a year on a skip program. That equates to about $2.2 million. So in a perfect world, we would need about $562,000 for skip funding and about $1.6 million in repaving money. We believe that this 1% JED-Z is going to generate approximately a million dollars. And that does not include the net profits tax from the businesses that would be rebated through a grant. We never factored in the net profits tax as part of the scenario. We're looking at strictly payroll tax in the amount of a million dollars. We don't know today how much of that million would need to be reserved to go back in the form of grants. I think we're much better off than some of the other townships that have gone forward with the JED-Zs where they've just gone into it anticipating. We actually worked with the Hamilton County Development Company to try to ascertain an approximate income level that this JED-Z would generate. While I said earlier that we would need approximately $2.2 million to meet our need, we felt that going with a 2% JED-Z or partnering with a city that gave us that capacity was really asking too much. So we're really asking our community to meet us halfway, a 1% that's going to really have minimal impact on our community, but yet it's going to be able to generate approximately a million dollars a year to put forth for some major needed public infrastructure improvements. A lot of JED-Zs can be formulated to be able to pay for just about anything in township government. We purposely decided that our proposal was going to be public infrastructure only. We did not put public safety in there. We could have, we chose not to. We did not want to complicate the issue. We have such a need to address public infrastructure, we wanted to stay focused on that need. So, just to clarify, only businesses and individuals who work in the Colrain Township JED-Z would be subject to the earnings and payroll tax. If you are a resident but do not work in the Township JED-Z, you will not be impacted at all as a result of this JED-Z. If you are a resident and work in the Colrain Township JED-Z, you will be able to apply for and receive a grant in the form of a check equal to the amount of the payroll tax you paid into the JED-Z. That's our way of attempting to hold our residents harmless. If you own a business in the Colrain Township JED-Z, you will be able to apply for a grant and receive in the form of a check equal to the amount of the net profits tax that you paid into the JED-Z. If you are a resident who is retired and not working, this JED-Z will not impact you. Unlike a normal ballot issue, when this shows up on the ballot issue, it will not be a levy, it's going to state, "Shall the resolution of the Board of Township Trustees of the Township of Colrain approving the contract with the city of Harrison for the designation of the Colrain Township Joint Economic Development Zone be approved?" And the question will be, for the resolution and contract or against the resolution and contract? Those that check the box for the resolution and contract are supporting the approval of this JED-Z. We will be communicating, if the board proceeds with this for the November election, we will be communicating in the near future, a factual newsletter to all residents and businesses within the township, very similar to what we just did with the Rumkey public hearing, that will lay out the details, the information, and the questions and answers. We will have questions and answers posted on our website, and we will begin the education campaign regarding this proposal. So at that point, this concludes my presentation.
At that point, we're going to move into the public hearing. I have three people, I believe, right now to sign into speak.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Sorry, thank you, Joe.
Second.
We've already done that.
Oh yeah, we did at the beginning.
Yeah, we did.
It was a long night last night, it's okay.
My apologies.
So first, we have Scott Taylor, and just a reminder, everybody has five minutes if Mr. Taylor would like to come up and speak.
Good evening, thank you. Just a few brief comments, kind of unrelated to this subject. I was at the Rumkey Town Hall meeting last night, and I think that was a good meeting. I appreciate the opportunity for the residents to speak their piece. It's a little tamer than I thought it would be. And I think you guys got a pretty clear message from the audience, at least I thought I did. But on this subject, the JED-Z, it sounds like the administrators kind of laid these things out as well, but I think it's really important that you do clarify that the money paid by any resident that works in the JED-Z or any business in the JED-Z will be refunded 100%. Not that we intend to, but that we will do it, because I know that's caused some heartburn for some people that have heard about this, so. Secondly, again, and the administrator hit on this, education is going to be key. I've had two different experiences in the past couple of weeks out in public where I heard people talking about the new tax the township's gonna, gonna put on us, and I tried to explain to people what it was. Once they listened and kind of, you know, heard what I had to say, they seemed to be more, you know, accepting of it, but I think, you know, we do have an uphill battle if this is something that we want the residents to pass. Thirdly, I think that independent of the decision on the Rumkey settlement, you know, I think we should continue down this path. If we think it's a good idea, then we should do it regardless of whether we agree to settle with Rumkey or don't agree to settle with Rumkey. And tied into that...
Scott, do you mind if I interject here real quick?
Yes.
Because this is an important point, it's bound to come up. If prospectively, the township were to make that settlement with Rumkey, there's still a lot of gating factors that have to take place for them to, you know, operate the landfill and the expansion area. Specifically, the township, or excuse me, the county commissioners have to agree to vacate U's road, that's a big unknown. And then the Ohio EPA has to license the facility. So a lot of big unknowns, even if we were to agree to the settlement, so, you know, in my opinion, well, we'll get into that later, but, you know, even if we were to agree to a settlement, and I'm not saying we would, but if we were, still a lot of...
Right.
What ifs still to come.
Right, which is why I think it's important that we still continue down this path, yeah. And kind of tie it in together, if both the settlement were to be agreed upon with Rumkey and this JED-Z were to pass by the vote, I think the combination of the funds that we'd have, along with, you know, using skip grant money, we could like really, really do a lot of road improvements with the combination of those funds from both sources, along with skip grants. I mean, a lot more than what we'd be able to do on our own with either none or just one of these opportunities, so. Something to keep in mind, and something maybe to help educate the public about, too. Something that just came to my mind, and I've mentioned this to the administrator before, is part of the newsletter that goes out, people don't understand that most of the roads in the township are not township roads. I mean, I hear it all the time, you know. I think people need to understand what roads the township is responsible for and what roads they're not, the majority of them are not, so. That's all, thank you.
Next, I have Scott Huber.
Good evening, thank you for hearing my comments tonight. I'd just like to start off by asking you to vote no on this issue here and now. I have a few reasons here why I want to discuss with you. And first and foremost, it primarily starts off with the council meeting that happened last month. In my opinion, the council voted, and they really didn't, they either didn't have the information that they should have had, or they didn't understand the information that they had. Because if you go back through those pictures and you look at all those slides that were in that packet, and you read the review councils, what their mission was, their mission was to determine whether the economic plan benefited the zone. That was their charge. Those pictures, and Mr. Rowan, if you want to flip through them or, you know, however you want to do it, none of those pictures are in the zone, none of them. So I don't know how the council could in good faith say that they made the best decision that the economic plan was in the best interest of the zone, when they were given those pictures of the roadways and sidewalks that aren't even in the zone. Second point I want to make about those photographs is the sidewalk, is that, you know, it seems for some reason the township is getting excited about doing repair and maintenance for sidewalks. And there's already state law in effect, there's already Hamilton County engineering law or policy for sidewalks, there's already township policy for sidewalks, that repair and maintenance of sidewalks is the responsibility of the property owner. It's not the township's responsibility, it's the property owner's responsibility. The law says that, the county and the township's policies say that. So I don't know where we got off on, we want to maintain and repair sidewalks, because you already have a vehicle in place that you can mandate a property owner to repair his sidewalk, and you can assess his property. That's already your power to do that. So I don't know why we're trying to fund sidewalks when we already have a vehicle to do that. Another point I'd like to make is that the, if the council did consider the infrastructure that was in the zone, they should have known that a vast majority of the roadways in that zone are owned by the state or they're owned by the county. There's a very small percentage of roads that are actually township roads. So, you know, I talked to the county engineer last week, I talked to the ODOT District Eight permit coordinator, you know, neither one of them know any of your plans or what's going on with this JEDs. And, you know, they kind of have some concerns that you're going to do all these improvements on ODOT roads and county roads, and they're not going to have the money to maintain it after you, after you provide it. Because they're in the same bind that you are, they don't have any money either. So I just, I don't know, I hope that people realize that, that there's more than just Colrain Township going out here and building a bunch of roads or maintaining them that they don't even own. They don't own that infrastructure, they don't own the storm sewers, they don't own the water mains and utilities, that, you don't own that. So that's why I'm not sure the review council really understood what they were, what they were getting into. Another issue I brought up to the council meeting was that, man, that was five minutes pretty quick, wasn't it? Was that the economic plan is very light on details. I asked them to provide three examples of what this money's going to be used for, I got no response. I, you know, I can ask you for one, and I don't know if I'll get one.
Joseph Road sidewalk.
Okay, fair enough, if you can get the Josephs to buy in on it. The last thing I want to make, since I'm running out of time, the last point, is this government complex is not included in the JEDs. And personally, that offends me, and I think it's divisive in the community, for, you know, the government, the township officials to sit there and dictate this plan to a specific group of people, and you're not leading by example. So I think, I think the, I think the government complex should be, should be included in it. And in closing, I just need to pull out this brochure I got from, from last November, and it clearly says on there, "Deters and Ritter," the first checkbox is against higher taxes. My taxes are going to go up, and I'm going to have the W2s to prove it at the, whenever this thing kicks in. I mean, I've read December, 2014, or definitely 2015, so my taxes are going up. I understand what Mr. Rowan said about the rebate. I appreciate his effort on that, but again, like he said, it's August 5th is the meeting, that's in the future, so I don't know how that meeting's going to go. So I, I'm just asking that you reject the plan completely, and I thank you for the extended time.
I'd like to address...
Go ahead.
Okay.
The first is, you know, the sidewalk maintenance, you know, there's no, you know, desire on our part to, you know, repair sidewalks that we're not obligated to. It's all about, you know, putting in, putting sidewalks in places like Joseph Road and around Northwest High School where it originally was a rural area, and now it's been growing, and we just don't have sidewalks, and it's a safety issue, so that, there's, you know, no issue there. You know, this issue of ODOT and county, you know, that's nothing more than a red herring in my opinion, because there's no desire to fix roads we're not obligated to that are owned by ODOT or the county. I think that's just a red herring, the way you said that, there's, it's just a non-issue. And then lastly, and most importantly, the, Mrs. Key can verify this, I liberally mentioned during the campaign last fall that I was against more property taxes other than for public safety, and that I was for a JED-Z. So, you know, if that wasn't clear on the mailer, so be it, but it was property taxes, that was the reference that was due. I've made many references, and you can go back and look at the tape of last fall, made many references to my support for the JED-Z, so, full disclosure.
And I just wanted to clear one thing, and I know Mr. Birkenhour and Mr. Barbieri can help me here, as far as this building specifically not being included, we were very limited in how you draw this thing, and you cannot have an ounce of residential neighborhood in this, and to get all the way down to this building, there are houses all along the street, and there was no way to draw it to get it to here. So, I mean, I know that we're very, very...
I'm a land surveyor, I can do it.
Well, it's already done at this point, but to get it here would take some creativeness with keeping it a contiguous patch of a zone, so.
As far as this, the decision for the rebate of funds, I, speaking as a member of the CIC, that's a kill killer, that's going to happen. I'm not going to speak for the board member.
We have a quorum here of the members of CIC.
The board, the board is here, the people who are in the CIC are sitting in front of you. That's, that's what we want, so. I don't see any net tax effect on any resident, any...
And I, I do think it's worth mentioning, traditionally, if you look at the Colrain Corridor Task Force, we do some TIF money and other things, we have kicked into ODOT improvements before to make that happen, and we've made some great improvements to Colrain Avenue. So from the standpoint of this money not being able to be used for the zone, I think there's a really pressing need right now on Colrain Avenue with the Havercoast Drive turn-in, that there's not enough stacking for those cars. I'd be happy to talk to ODOT District Eight, I talked to them yesterday, when we just had to lessen the extent of our Safe Routes to Schools sidewalk program, because we don't have enough money and ODOT doesn't have enough money. So we just had to lessen a safe sidewalk for kids to get to school, because ODOT and the township didn't have enough money to cover the increased cost of the project, which this would be able to cover. So there's a lot of needs out there. If you look at Green Township, they're redoing Harrison Avenue, and it stops on the township line. Literally, when you're driving on Harrison Avenue and it's raining, you can't drive in the curb lane right now, because it's so deteriorated. And guess what, Colrain's not going to be in there, because Col, because Green Township contributed the residential TIF capital improvement money to the county to get grant money to make this happen. Havercoast Lane, the stacking is literally gridlocked during the holidays. If you can use this JED-Z money to benefit those businesses in the zone, and if you talk to the Meyer manager, he's very concerned about people not turning into his grocery store during the holidays because of the terrible traffic. So if we can put in 20% of the capital improvements, you said it, ODOT doesn't have enough money, they're not even cutting the grass right now. So if we're going to make improvements, we have to, we have to take our initiative and make sure that we make those improvements to keep the zone healthy.
Right.
Years ago, people were avoiding Colrain Avenue, it was stigmatized because of the literal gridlock. Tom Hart was one of the founding members of the Colrain Corridor Task Force, and at that time, the trustees put several hundred thousand dollars into it, they had the money to do it, the businesses did as well. But I don't think we can lose sight of the fact that we're going to have millions of more visitors with a new cinema, the Cheddar's restaurants, and the revitalization of Northgate Mall, and how are we going to handle that traffic in the future? If this JED zone provides capital improvement money for that to occur, I think it's a very worthy cause.
Right, but my point was, is that you're going to be able to build that, but you don't use the JED money...
We're not building new highways, we're not building new county roads.
You're building interchanges, or, you know, whatever you're going to improve.
I don't think anybody's building new interchanges, now...
Well, you just said Havercoast, whatever you're going to do to modify the intersection at Havercoast and Colrain Avenue.
No, you would, you change the median, we're not building new roads, we're not building new highways or new county roads.
But my, my point is, is that the JED-Z...
I can guarantee you, talking to ODOT District Eight, that they would be more than happy to partner with Colrain on any of these projects.
Yes, they would, they would love to.
And they wouldn't say that they wouldn't make an improvement, because they can't handle, they can't fix the roads.
In a maintenance, they, their concern is long-term maintenance.
Not building new roads, I'm not talking about building...
Their concern is long-term maintenance.
I'll talk to them about that.
Long-term maintenance.
That's, that would be fine.
Tom Makris.
Oh, I know Tom Makris, I talk to him often.
Yeah, Makris, right.
Yes.
He's the man.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments as well. First of all, the decision with regards to the grant will be made before the community votes on this issue. So what we're asking this evening is to proceed to the ballot and let our community decide whether this is a good way to generate alternative revenue to address public infrastructure, without having to increase taxes on our property taxes. Or in the case of those that are paying the income tax by getting the grant, essentially they're paying no additional taxes. I'd like to make a point on the sidewalks. Our neighborhoods are instrumental in the success of this corridor. If your neighborhoods deteriorate and people don't move in, businesses will suffer, they will close, and your corridor will be nothing more than Wild, Wild West, it'll just be an empty corridor. So if we can improve our neighborhoods... So, if we can improve our neighborhoods, which may include sidewalks, and the administration's recommendation will be to utilize these funds to go out there, and if the property owner is not able to maintain those sidewalks, we will have a vehicle to replace them and assess them. But right now, we don't have funding to even be able to make them fix them, because normally, if they fail to follow through, we have to fix it, we have to pay it, then we have to assess it. This will allow us to go out there and, and lead by example. We invest in our neighborhoods. How can we go out right now and say, "Go out there and fix your sidewalks," when we're not doing anything from a township government's perspective to invest in public infrastructure? If we get this in place, and we can start fixing our neighborhoods, and they have a reason to invest in those sidewalks, if they can't do it, then we will do what we need to, to improve those neighborhoods, because they need to be a viable part to keep that corridor going.
I, I agree with you, and I get it, but the way this is all happening, i- it's not right to, to isolate just people in a corridor, in a business corridor, just because you drew a line on a map. That's not the way you solve community problems, in my opinion. Now, you know, we can debate this all night. We've got a couple other speakers. Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. Kerr.
Good evening. I have a couple of questions relating to the contract and the law, and a couple of points to make there, and then probably jump off on my philosophical bent, so strap yourself First of all, just looking over the contract, um, in here, it talks about how, what Colrain will do and what the city of Harrison will do. And one thing it says is that, uh, the city of Harrison will encourage commercial development necessary or appropriate to complement and benefit the economic development of the zone. I was just curious, in this arrangement with the city of Harrison out on the western edge of, uh, the, the county, what are they physically going to do to meet that obligation of promoting an economic development corridor in my township? Does anybody, I was, I was a little surprised at the council meeting when they had no presentation.
Well, they're going to collect the funds, for one thing, but to the extent that there's anything that they can do from the standpoint of economic development, encourage businesses to go into that zone, they get a percentage of the money that comes in, so they're going to get more money, uh, from that. So they're going to be incentivized to do that as well.
So they would be more incentivized, uh, scraping off the 10% of the JED's income tax to promote our corridor than they would their own city? That seems a little counterintuitive to me, but.
Well, I'm not saying they're going to be more incentivized to promote our zone than they are their own, but I mean, if there are businesses, they can incentivize to some way to help us, you know, businesses that are talking about coming here and they can help us, they're incentivized to do that. So they're collecting the tax, they're helping us there, and they're going to have a reason to go ahead and help other businesses, more tax revenue come into the zone.
And I think a point with regards to that, in, in the meetings that I've been with Mr. Birkenhour and some of the various Director of Economic Development, there's a, a tight network, and, you know, we kind of all know what businesses go to what communities. And if there's an opportunity that we have a partner, and they already have a business there, and that business is looking to expand, um, they're going to be more incentivized to say, "Well, why don't you go over to Colrain Township?" Because we are a partner with them versus maybe going to Forest Park or someplace like that.
I can see that in a developed relationship, where there might be more than one, one facility. That, that does make sense. Mr. Rowan, you mentioned that you did some more research into the cap on the amount or the percentage of allowable, and although the, the law and the contract provides for up to the same amount as the city collects, I understand that from what you just said, if I got it right, that Exhibit B to the contract, um, states that the Board of Directors will institute a levy at 1% in their first meeting, or whatever.
That's correct. Exhibit B is actually Exhibit B of the plan.
Of the plan.
And the plan has already been approved by the council, the JED council. Therefore, in my opinion, and I talked to Mr. Barbieri later this evening, we believe that that would be restricted to the 1%.
So you can't envision any method by which the, I guess the council dissolves now? Okay.
The council dissolved immediately after.
Okay, and so there's no way for, uh, the Board of Directors to counter anything that's been set down by the council, is that?
Based on the current legislation, if the council were to come back together to modify a plan, there's not enough time to get that modified plan approved by this body and on the ballot prior to January 1st.
Okay. Moving on quickly here, um, another point is getting into the nitty-gritty of the, the withholding and who gets what. It talks about that, uh, the city will get an annual service fee of 2% of the gross take, is, is what I read here. And then, uh, and then another 2% is going to be set in escrow, I guess, as kind of a cash flow type money, I, I think. And then it's, goes on to state that from the distributable revenue that's left over after those withholdings, Harrison's going to get 8.5%, and we're going to get 91.5% of what's left over. If I do the math, uh, which I did real quickly in the back of a napkin, that original 2% and 8.5% of what's left over after the, the set aside, or whatever you want to call it, is adding up to a little more than 10%, I think. And I think this is being sold as, as 10, 10%, 90%. If I missed some math, or does this all work out to 1090?
I don't think it's been sold at this point. Like I said, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Rowan said there's going to be a newsletter and a marketing campaign, and, um, we did an RFP with, um, certain communities that we felt could handle this large of a zone. It was, uh, Forest Park, City of Cheviot, and, uh, the city of Harrison, and they came back with the lowest rate. If there's been some misunderstanding that it's purely 9010, I apologize, but, uh, there is administrative fee, Sycamore Township, Columbia Township, Springfield Township, the other, uh, JED zones, um, we actually, of all the current JED zones, would have the, uh, most cost going back to the township of all those based upon our RFP. So I don't want to, uh, mislead anybody, but I'm very proud of the numbers we're showing.
I, I guess I would just encourage when your public, um, announcements come out in education that you try to simplify it as much as you can and go through these steps and boil it down.
We'll say 11.5%.
What, yes. If that's what it is, that's, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
10.5%.
Whatever. 10.1, I, you know, I'm not sure. Like I said, a fuzzy math. Going to the law that, that, uh, allows this whole situation to occur, looking in here, one of the things that the plan was supposed to have contained was a schedule. And that kind of goes hand in hand with what Mr. Yubu was saying about specific things to be done. I, I don't think I saw much of a hint of a schedule as to when we were going to do what and whatever. And I just point that out, that that could be considered, you know, objectionable by some people, that the, the intent of the law to provide a specific plan and a specific schedule, I don't think has, has been done. I understand there's been tremendous time constraints. This whole law was just changed on June 5th. But have, have I missed a schedule? Did I not get a page in the plan or anything? No?
I would have to defer to council.
Okay. Well, it's, it's, it's in the law that there's supposed to be a schedule.
Well, as far as we, I know you have the whole document, but we, that's why they have an economic review board. Um, they created that to look at the economic plan in order to approve it. People spoke that evening. We discussed the same things with that board, and the board unanimously approved it. We not have an exact schedule when the work is going to be done and which street is going to be worked on first, but we, I think, satisfied that criteria by limiting this to the public infrastructure. Most JEDs, I've been involved in many of these, and most JEDs, the economic plan covers all kinds of things. Safety services, um, a lot of different ideas. We limited ours to the public infrastructure, and we limited ours to public infrastructure that was going to benefit the JED zone, and 50% of it is going to be done in the JED zone. So I think that, at least in the opinion of the economic review board, satisfied what the law required, and as I said, they voted unanimously in favor.
That sounds to me more like a quantity of work or a type of work was specified as opposed to a timeline schedule, but then there are different definitions of the word "schedule." So, okay. Real quickly, I, I've heard it said that, look, um, you know, visiting workers use our facilities, and they should, you know, should have some skin in the game, and, and as was pointed out, the workers that go to these businesses along that corridor, by and large, don't use our regis-, uh, residential street, don't use our, you know, sewer water infrastructure, things like that. So, um, I just wanted to make that point. Also, you say that there's no penalty to Colrain residents. Well, there isn't, in a way. I mean, they have to, they're going to have a certain percentage of their paycheck withheld, and they're not going to get it back until they file for it, and there's the hassle of filing, and I don't know if that's going to occur a quarter, can occur quarterly, or you're going to have to do that 1% a year. But, um, you know, you got a guy making 750 bucks a week or something, less than 40,000 a year, you take 1% of his pay, 7.5 bucks, that might be his gas money to get to work for three or four days, or lunch money for the kids for three or four days. So, um, to say that it's not, there's no financial ramifications to the township residents, I think is not quite right. So, I see my time's up. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Uh, those were the only people who signed in. I know that we had some door issues earlier, so, um, some people had some trouble getting in. Is there anybody else tonight that wishes to speak about this subject? Mr. Hart? Come on up.
Thank you for having this meeting tonight. I'm sorry I didn't have time this afternoon to prepare adequately, but I'll try to wing it the best I can. Frank, how, right now, on the left turn going into Havercoast going north, uh, there's six spaces available for turning left. The light itself only presents maybe five, and if you're going through on the sixth car, it's pretty well read. How many additional spaces are you going to add to that?
Tom, I'm not an engineer. I'm not going to.
I know, but you don't have any idea at all?
I don't have any idea.
I, I think it needs another 10, so 15.
Tom, I, I'm not a traffic engineer.
I'm, I'm just making that recommendation.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that a, a traffic engineer, actually, somebody from ODOT told me, boy, that could, in retrospect, after you build Stone Creek Town Center, that could use a lot more stacking.
Absolutely.
But we don't have the money to do it.
Right. And, and I'm, I'm glad you chose that part first, because the backup is incredibly large, and it backs up all the way to Galbert Road. So, there's no, I have no qualms with what you're doing there. How much money will you spend on Colrain Avenue or county roads out of this?
We'll comply with the law. The law says we have to spend 50%. We'll spend 50%. But right now, we're not committing that any of that money will initially be spent in the corridor. Our intent is to do the neighborhoods first, and if that means we have to spend 100% the first 10 years in our neighborhoods, and 100% in the corridor the next 10 years, I'll work with council to make sure we're in compliance with the law. But once again, our goal is to get the neighborhoods back into some condition of, uh, non-deterioration.
I, I understand that, and I agree wholeheartedly that that is where the greatest need in this community is, and I've been saying that for the last 10, 15 years. But my point would be that, will that be acceptable to the law? And I, I, if you have to defer that to council, I don't know, and I don't, I'm not going to ask you for an opinion tonight, but I would like to have an answer on that. Second thing, or third thing, is that, do you realize that the?
Well, let me, let me say the answer.
Go ahead.
The answer to your question is that we will comply with the law.
Okay. But is, the question was whether or not you can do the year-by-year or 10-year lumps? And that's my question.
We will comply with the law.
The work that's done in the township by an employee and is withheld from out of the city, my understanding is, is that amount is not able to be credited to other cities. So if you live in the city of Cincinnati, which has a 2.1%, they have to pay that 2.1% because they live there. The 10%, or the 1% will not be put on as a credit. Is that correct?
I don't know what the rules are in the other cities. I, it is my understanding that reciprocity does apply in some cases to the JED-Zs. I don't know what the city arrangements are in the various municipalities.
I, I think that's going to be a very important consideration, because what you're doing is you're increasing the tax position of those people from 2% to 3% without any repercussions.
And to clarify, those are non-residents you're referring to, correct?
Absolutely. Yes. Colrain, we're not going to be taxed. We're, you're going to steal our money and then give it back to us, in a sense. And, uh, I think that probably the most wonderful thing you could do would be to go visit Mr. Blessing's office and ask him to put forth a law that says only non-residents will be withheld, withheld on. Now, I don't know if that is possible through the state legislature, because this law has been repealed. Governor signed it, uh, was it June 5th, you say? Did I hear that?
I'm not sure which date specifically he signed.
Somewhere around there. So, so I don't know how you, you change a law that's already been repealed. I, I have no clue on that. That's not my forte. The, the taking of the money and, and automatically refunding it is unique. I have never heard that in any other state, and I've been a CPA for 40 years, and I have never, ever heard that as a standard which needed to be complied with. If you didn't owe the tax, you didn't have to pay it. If you didn't pay it, then even you owed it, they would, you would have to file the return and admit your tax due and pay the tax. But I've never heard taking the money knowing full well, they, they're exempt from the tax. I understand it's a state law. It's my understanding.
Well, other communities in this area have done the same thing, and it's not, they're exempt from state law. The Colrain has a CIC which is created in order to promote economic development, and the grants that are going to be given by the CIC are grants that are intended to aid economic development. It's not a matter of somebody exempt from the tax, and Colrain Township's not the first, um, place to do this in this area. In fact, there are several other communities who have done this.
But is the rule that you're doing it originate with the state or with this contract?
Really neither. It's going to originate with the Colrain Township CIC, and the Colrain Township CIC's aim is to promote economic development in Colrain Township. But the members of the CIC that are here tonight have pledged that they are going to vote to give these grants back to the residents who live in Colrain Township in an amount equal to the amount of taxes that they pay.
Let me clarify, Tom. If there would have been any way possible that we could have, would not have had to collect the tax on the residents or the business in the zone, we would not have.
Okay.
But on a vice of council, the law's the law, and we have to follow the law.
I understand. Okay.
And the only mechanism we have in an attempt to hold them harmless is to provide them a grant back through the CIC. There are other townships that have passed JED-Zs that are not crediting the net profits tax back to businesses, only if that business is 50% owned by a resident of, of that particular township. We have decided that every business in that zone will be granted back 100% of the net profits tax.
All right. I appreciate that. My understanding is that Springfield Township had a zone that was covering the entire township. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And why did we not do the whole township rather than just a small zone?
That's really a matter of legal opinion and, you know, something that we really can't discuss in this open.
The Ohio Society of CPAs, which I am a member, um, takes a poll every year, and they ask for various opinions on various topics. And the most despicable, distasteful, hated, um, program that we have in Ohio is local income taxes. Every city, there's certain guidelines, have different rules, and they're all, all over the place. And the Ohio Society for 10 years have been working very hard to try to straighten this out, and I think they're going to be continuing to work on this process. And they got rid of the JED-Zs because of this problems that we're talking about tonight. I know what you're talking about, Frank, and I'll, I'll agree, not to agree, but we'll go on. My point is, is that we, we, we came to a township, and our forefathers established 1,041 or something like that townships, 88 counties, 600 or 700 school districts, and townships, 88 counties, 600 or 700 school districts, and then the cities created themselves under code. And they were created, like, for example, the city of Hamilton, that could create their own electric power plants, their own sewer...
Mr. Hart, I apologize, but you're out of time. I let you go over the five minutes. I'm sorry.
All right, okay.
Was there anybody else this evening that wished to speak on the matter? Mr. Mason?
Yes, Danny Mason. I've lived here since the early '50s, owned my own home since 50 years, I guess. Paid a lot of taxes in there, paid to the great city of Cincinnati, the 2-point-something percent for the 23 years I worked at the University of Cincinnati. They do have a line around that. That's called a city, but this is the only option that a township has. There can be nothing wrong with you going to the voters for this. I can't tell you that every voter in Corrine Township is the most educated person on that list of people or plans that's on there, but I do know that people in my area look at this very hard. We've had some pretty close elections. We know that it's split. It's on the ballot. We voted in or out. I have no complaint. You'll seldom see me up here wanting to even appear to look at higher taxes, and I've got to say, it doesn't affect me. But I think the residents deserve a break. I'm sure over those 50 years of property ownership here, some of my money has gone to improvements in TIFs and various other things on Corrine Avenue and other business areas. Corrine Avenue takes a tremendous amount of our safety services, although this is not paying that, but it may free up a dollar or two here somewhere down the road. Put it on about.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Just a comment on that briefly. I know it was mentioned earlier that they don't use our services. I very much beg to differ. The whole reason we have a beat at the Northgate Mall right now is because we were having so many police runs out there that the mall wanted to put full-time officers there to not only change the image of the mall, but just due to the volume of the runs out there. So I think every business along the corridor definitely uses our safety services, whether it's a customer having a heart attack in the middle of their business, or, like I said, some other police matter. And they do use our infrastructure greatly, and I don't want to start down the Rumpke path again, but I think we've all seen the damage done to 27 from the Rumpke trucks. So the businesses in that corridor, very much so, use our infrastructure. So that was just my little point for the moment. Is there anybody else other... I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir, but if you'd like to... if you don't mind giving us your name.
My name's Frank Ruggeri. R-U-G-G-E-R-I-E. Sure, sure. I'm not a resident, but my family and I have operated a business here for 54 years. We have some perspective on what's developed and not developed. I disagree with a lot of this, but the fact is, is if you pass this on, and it goes to the ballot, it'll be the most lopsided victory that we've ever seen in this township. Why not? That's the way it'll be. Maybe Tom's run for trustee would have been a little more lopsided. No, just kidding. My point is, this is where the decision's going to be made. I don't care what the last speaker said. It's a no-brainer for any resident not involved in paying these taxes, or any worker that's not going to be paying them, to not vote for the issue. Now that you're going to have this new revenue stream opened up, which will not be available, the state won't let you enact anything like this anymore, but you're going to do it anyway, what's the process for changing it from 1% to 2%? Harrison has a 2% tax, and I understand now, and they're going to make up half of this board, and they're going to be receiving a percentage of the receipts. Why wouldn't they not be lobbying to increase this to 2%? And what's, where does it stop? How do you turn the spigot off or control it? That's my question.
Well, it is our belief that with the new law, and the fact that the Joint Economic Development Council had to approve the economic development plan that is presented this evening for the board's consideration, because the 1% is stated in Exhibit B as part of that plan, we will not be permitted to change that percentage, because when the sunset hits December 31st, these JEDZs cannot be modified.
Okay, thank you. And the other comment I have, talking about creating an educational piece to put out. I printed off all the materials I could about this, the economic plan, the contract, et cetera, and, you know, there's not one statement in there that says residential streets are going to be receiving priority. Everything talks about the zone or the colony, is the way I look at it. It seems to me that it's a little misdirection going on here, okay? So if you're going to create an educational piece, let's make it accurate, okay? Lay it out factually and objectively. You're going to wash your hands of this and turn it over to the voters, which is an automatic landslide. So please just lay it out so that it's objective. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone else? Fraktions coming up?
Yeah, let's call my name, Heather.
Okay, thank you.
I just got a couple of questions here. I read over this jet also, but there were some questions brought up to me by some people, and I think Frank, this was sent to you originally, but somehow it got into some other people's hands. But the question being is, what percent of the employees that work in the proposed JEDZ corridor are assumed to be residents of Corrine Township?
There's no way of knowing that. There's, just as a clarification, Sycamore Township, Springfield Township, Columbia Township, if there was a way, we knew that if there was a data source, find it, but there isn't. Sort of not going to do it in the township.
What are the current estimate of tax revenues generated by the 1% tax on businesses' net profits?
We have not projected any income associated with the net profits tax, because it's going to be provided right back in the form of a grant. So we never calculated anything from the net profits tax, even in our original assumptions of $1 million. We were focused truly on the payroll tax.
Okay. And then the last question was, basically, what percentage of businesses are owned, JEDZ are owned by Corrine residents?
We don't know that either.
Oh, we should, Jim.
Well, I have LLCs. If you look at the ownership madam on the Hamilton County Auto's website, and you look at the parcel numbers, there is LLCs. There's no way of finding that out.
There's 10 pages, Frank. I know that. I've looked at them.
There is.
Yeah, I've looked some of them up, yes.
And I can't force people to tell me whether that LLC is owned by a resident or not, and I don't think, from a government standpoint, it would be appropriate for me to force them to do so.
Okay. And the last question that I have, or comment, is, why didn't we go south of Galbraith Road to the Corrine border?
The gross spec area currently is a community reinvestment area, and if you look at the development that's occurred in the past eight years, it's overwhelmingly been in the area north of Galbraith Road. And right now, we're trying to get investment into the gross spec area, and to put this additional JEDZ south of Galbraith, we felt inappropriate this time, because right now, we're suffering from disinvestment. A majority of the calls that I get from new businesses, they say, "We want to be between Cross County and Struble Road," but I rarely get anyone saying south of Galbraith. So if we can incentivize... Someone called me the other day, although I don't think this is very true. I've been here for 17 years, and someone said, "You know, if you put a 1% income tax, I might move my business." If they do, we encourage them to move it south of Galbraith Road, where there's no income tax. And maybe if that incentivizes them, they'll do that. In my experience here in Corrine Township, right when I got the job here, Clifford Instrument Laboratories was looking at expanding, and they chose to move into the city of Fairfield, where they have an income tax. I lost out on a business three years ago, which would have brought 100 jobs to the township, and they went to Forest Park, income tax. So I have not seen in my tenure here someone decide to go to Corrine Township because there's not an income tax.
Okay. My question, and basically is to point it. We have two Walmart stores. We have a Target. We have two Walgreens, and we have two Kroger stores, and we have Clifford Instruments, which I believe is probably the biggest employer we have in the township right now. I may be wrong. I'm not counting Rumpke, because part of people from Rumpke live outside our township. But it would seem that those people should be here, speak on their behalf, which I'm sorry they're not. But I think with the relationship that you and Frank particularly have with Walmart people, it should be helpful to have somebody speak to the trustees about this before it goes...
Walmart was on the Economic Development Committee that approved the plan.
Oh, okay.
They were brought in. So they've reviewed the plan, and they've vetted for it.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone else tonight? Seeing no one else, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Take it.
Aye.
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 I don't know where to start, actually. I took some notes, and I know I'm probably going to steal a lot of Jeff's thunder, because Jeff likes to make the Columbus ding-dah speech, but I'll make it tonight. For as long as I've been here, all we've talked about is how bad our funding has been cut, and how much it hurt us from the State House. And it's not, I mean, it's not a myth. It's reality that we have lost a lot of money. And for some reason, the State House decided yet again to try to take away one of the only tools we have to raise money, aside from adding one to everybody's property taxes, which nobody wants. So I know some people think it looks shady, or that we're trying to get this in, but this is our last opportunity to try to do this, and we missed out on some TIF money a few years back, and we're not going to let this pass us by again. That's basically where we're at. We're going to put it on the ballot. As people have repeatedly said in our last few town halls, they want to vote on things. They want to vote on things. So that is why we, I believe, are going to vote tonight to put this on the ballot. Can't speak for my partners here, but basically, this is not a property tax. We are not adding to the burden of our homeowners. That is bottom line. We are adding the burden to people who do not live here and come here and work here. Every single day, I pay money to the city of Cincinnati, because that is where I work. I get no vote. I get no say. They take my money. I'm not happy about it, but that's what happens, because they're a city, and that's just how it works. Well, unfortunately, we are not a city, but this is the one outlet we have to raise money, and at this point, I think we should basically take it. I think this is the easiest way to not burden our residents further and make up some of the shortfall that we have in our budget. So I am obviously for this tonight.
So she's right. I am going to start a little bit talking about the fact that, in a large measure, this funding source, if it's passed, will only replace some of the money that we used to receive from the state through the estate tax and the local government fund, which was eliminated. I want to stress that I don't wake up in the morning thinking of new ways to tax the residents. I dislike taxes as much as anybody. As the elected official stated in a guest column a few weeks back, this was the lesser of all evils. As we look at the situation in totality, we can either let the township continue to wither on the vine in terms of our roads and other services, or we can take action to try to fix it. We are a community of 58,000-plus people, which I think would rank as the 14th-largest city in Ohio if we were a city. We have many, many, many characteristics of a city, especially on our eastern side, and it needs money to support that. Without rambling on, I'm going to go ahead and read something into the record that was stated by my good friend, State Senator Bill Seitz, back on May 21st, when they had a debate on the floor of the Senate up in Columbus about whether to eliminate the JEDZ law. And I thought this was the most eloquent offense of local government, and particularly township government, that I'd ever heard. But I think it's important enough that I'm going to read this, and I'd ask you to just bear with me, because it is a little bit long. "Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today with a rhetorical question that was asked to me at approximately 1:00 PM. When I spoke with trustee Jeff Ritter, a Republican township trustee from Corrine Township, which is, depending on the day, either the largest or second-largest township in Ohio with approximately 60,000 residents, trustee Ritter, a longtime good friend of mine, asked me one question. Quote, 'What did we in township government ever do to make this General Assembly continue this unrelenting war on our resource stream? First, you reduced the local government fund by 50%. Then you eliminated the estate tax. Now you take away the right of our voters to pass a JEDZ. We are left with virtually nothing. We have the right to do a JED, but only if all the business owners consent to the JED. The business owners do not get to vote. Corporations do not get to vote. When municipalities raise their income tax, and no one seems to call that taxation without representation. So they have the right to do a JED, and they have the right to raise property taxes, and under certain limited situations, to do a tax increment financing for capital purposes only.' His question was, 'What did we ever do to earn this problem?' I said, 'Jeff, I am with you, but it appears that a majority of my colleagues are not with you.' On Sunday, I was at a party for Justice Sharon Kennedy, and a Delhi township trustee was there. Another Republican, and sister-in-law of appellate court judge Sylvia Seavey Hendon. She is the former fiscal officer of Delhi and currently a trustee. That township has somewhere between 30,000 and 40,000 people. Her comment to me was, 'You have cut our general fund by 70%, 7-0%, and now you propose to take away the right to have a JEDZ in our township? How can you possibly do such a thing?' I said, 'I am with you, but I know that a majority of my colleagues are not.' I have heard from green townships, Springfield Township, Sycamore Township, virtually every township in my county, saying, 'We cannot believe this is happening to us.' As you know, I have tried in vain for over three years to restore some modicum of funding to townships who, unlike counties, get no casino money, and unlike cities, have no income tax. Who do not have all the other arsenal of revenues that cities and counties have, and that has fallen on deaf ears on the General Assembly as well. When these large urban townships that ring our inner cities face bankruptcy, they may very well find that they have no recourse but to become cities themselves. And when they do, their budgets will double, or triple, or quadruple, and the size of government will grow, and grow, and grow, as it does in municipalities. Their taxing authority will be equal to that of Columbus, or Cleveland, or Canton, or Dayton, or Cincinnati. This unrelenting assault on township government will have very bad consequences down the line for those of you who care of not growing the size of government. But you are leaving my township friends with very little choice. I am hopeful, regardless of today's vote, that we will wake up and take this seriously, what we in the General Assembly have done over the last three years to cause the kind of problems for our townships, in particular, our large urban townships that I have described today. I urge a no vote, even though I recognize that there are and have been abuses of the JEDZ process, and that there are those that believe a JEDZ is a job killer. But it isn't in Hamilton County. In the May 16th edition of the Columbus Dispatch, an expert was quoted as follows, "Columbus and Cincinnati are better performing. Everybody else is struggling with demographics. We have JEDZs in Hamilton County. They are working in Hamilton County. Now we are depriving them of the right to have new JEDZs. And you can't say it is a job killer, because the Cincinnati region is helping to drive our job recovery, reduce our employment rate. We are taking a major step backwards today and hurting the very townships that have been so loyal to us over the years, and I cannot support this bill.'" I think that eloquently describes the feelings I have about the situations we're in, especially in large urban townships like Southern Ohio has. And I would also add that when this bill went to the House, it was unanimously rejected by the entire Southwest contingent, Republican or Democrat, because they see how harmful it is. So I've used enough time. I intend to support this measure, and it's, like we said in our guest column, the lesser of all evils. I wish this could have been avoided, but the alternative is clearly more property taxes, and I believe our residents have been overburdened enough, not to mention the fact we've just successfully passed a modest police levy. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I think that this decision that's being made by our administration and put this on the ballot is responsible. There's abuses of this process, which, as trustee Ritter has alluded to, have caused the JED process to be sunsetted at the end of the year. Certain governments have used it to isolate certain businesses, et cetera. What Corrine has done is, first and foremost, making sure that there's no effect on our residents. I understand Mr. Kerr's comment relative to the inconvenience of those payments, and that may have some nominal effect on certain people, maybe a major effect. And that's a necessary downside to this. a necessary downside to this. But when the decision was made, we're very careful relative to where we place this. The money is going to be used responsibly to rebuild our economic core and neighborhood surrounding, so I think it's a good thing. We can't sit by and worry that this is a strange process that, you know, we need to think about. We don't have time. We're at a critical point in our history. We've got a lot of big decisions to make. We need to move in order to salvage our place in competition between other neighborhoods and cities around it, so I'm going to support it.
At that time, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Colrain corridor JEDZ contract.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Finally, then, we have a resolution to proceed to the Board of Elections. Do I have a motion to pass that tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Ms. Rowan, is there anything further we need to discuss tonight?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.